Six thirty, I'm gonna call the order, the Joshua City Council one-on-one, South Main, Joshua, Texas. This is an open meeting, excuse me, subject to the open meeting laws of the state of Texas. We do have this available on Zoom, and we also have a public forum section. If anybody on Zoom or anybody in the audience would like to speak under the public forum, or under any of the items on our agenda, we do have a sheet if you're in person to fill out, or if you're on Zoom, there's a little button you can push, and that will notify the city secretary, and we will let you speak. I am gonna call the meeting to order and announce that we have a quorum present. Our Merle Breitenstein is gonna do the pledge, followed by the invocation from Mike Kidd.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored with Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Before we do the invocation, I'd like everybody to sort of take a moment of silence. We've lost two very important people to our city this month. One was Robbie Allen. He was the owner of Pathway. He was on the city council for I don't know how many years, but he was on it for a long time and did a lot when Joshua was first growing. And the other one was Peggy Maxfield. Peggy was the benefactor for the city and just about every other charity in town. Anytime we ever needed any money for anything, Peggy would always be the first one in line to donate. She did a lot for our police department. She did a lot for the fire department. She contributed to the YMCA. She contributed to the Chisholm Trail One Hundred, to the Citizens Illinois Police Academy, and just a very, very exceptionally fine person. So if everybody doesn't mind, just let's think about thirty seconds and remember those two folks.
Thank you. Keep your heads bowed, please. Father God, we come to you today. We thank you, Lord, for keeping us safe this year. Father, we thank you for carrying this city through a year of financial windfalls and great obstacles, Lord, that you've helped us overcome. Father, we thank you for being here with us during these meetings and helping us make decisions, Lord. Give us the sound mind to make sound decisions for this city, Lord. Father, we thank you for protecting us and protecting our first responders, Lord. We thank you for giving us your love and your protection all the time. Father, we thank you for these things, in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
First thing is work session. First item on the work sessions, review and discuss questions related to the budget and financial statement. Anybody have any questions on the budget or financial statement? Next is discussion on future installation of the fiber lines for internet service. Mike.
This is an item that was asked to be put on for discussion, and most of you know, one of the items that are available for use of federal ARPA funds is to increase underserved areas with internet access. We've identified several areas within the city that are underserved that are either not receiving service or receiving it by antenna. And so we approached Pathway, who has some areas of the city covered with fiber. We've also spoke with United Co-op, who is currently installing fiber in areas of the city. And then we also reached out to AT&amp;T and a couple of smaller agencies that did not respond. United Co-op is focused on their service area currently. And so their plan for installation really right now is only targeted for areas where they provide electric service. More than half of the city is dual certified, so we have Encore and United Co-op, and so those Encore areas are currently not within their plan for the next twelve to eighteen months. Pathway, of course, being local, on top of that, has provided some information that I provided to you in the staff report. And I think probably right now, what I'd like to do is just kind of submit from the council to work out with them to take a couple of these neighborhoods and work out an agreement with them to install fiber into those lines, and then use some of these ARPA funds to help with those expenses. We've got some preliminary costs that they provided. We have not had any discussions about what an agreement would look like, but if you okay that tonight, we can start those conversations and try to get an agreement ready for you guys to act on in January for the meeting. I spoke with Scott Kimble this afternoon about it. He's been involved in this, and was really one of the ones that asked us to look into it. So I kind of went over this with him. He's looked at the stuff also. And what I would recommend is that we take these two areas in Mountain Valley, Mountain Valley Boulevard and the old section of Mountain Valley. It includes a pretty fair number of homes, and that'll get us started where, see if we can't start getting some of these areas covered, and kind of working out how that would look. I've also asked Ray from Pathway to come tonight if you guys had any questions. But again, we really haven't started going over how this agreement will look and... But if it's y'all's direction to do that, then we'll start those conversations right after the holidays.
Question, what's the installation price? I sort of get that, but what's the drop price? What is that?
Ray, you want to start to speak to that?
So what we told Mike was that if the city would help us with the main infrastructure, then we would put the cost on the drop. So we present like we currently do. We charge a fifty dollar install fee, but then that includes a drop.
I've got a question on the homes and the installation fee. The Mountain Valley alone is only two hundred and forty-five homes, but it's four hundred, almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars installation versus behind Fast Taco, three hundred and sixty homes is only a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars to install that. So there's such a great difference in that. Is it because of the volume of, it's the footage of runs, or what's the difference in the cost there?
So it's either gonna be some of the materials, which is a whole lot less expensive. Here in town, the contractor charges us anywhere from ten to fifteen dollars a foot, because most of the time I have to bore everything.
Most everything in Old Mountain Valley is underground, right?
I think so. That's, I think we looked at it, and we may be able to do some areas, but the majority is gonna be where Fast Taco is. So we may have some cable in the ground there already, so that could be part of the reason. I don't have all that money in there for this stuff.
Like you were saying, that the drop for about fifty dollars each, but then if I take the two hundred and forty-five homes and put that into the hundred and four thousand, that's about four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
No, no, we charge fifty dollars for an install. The cost for the drop may be three hundred and a half. So that's just what we charge for an install. If you call us and say we have service, we go out there and put the drop in, which is a hundred feet or five hundred feet, and you still pay fifty dollars.
Okay.
But that's...
But it costs y'all. Okay. And then what you're looking for is this still to be decided on the installation. Who pays the four hundred and forty-five? Are you asking us to do all that, or is that something that we're gonna negotiate?
So that's what we're asking the city to... Just because I know y'all have some ARPA money, and we've talked to some other cities, because we serve some rural areas out, like we have Grandview, a couple east of Hillsboro, Cleveland, Austin, and we're in Hammond, some high notes. And they got some money also, and so we've been working with them. And so we, I think Mike may have actually, Mike may have contacted me about this. I think you reached out first.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
All right. Well, like I said, my feelings on it, I'd like to, you know, come up with a better dollar amount, because I know we're trying to do some of the street repairs and everything else, and this would knock a pretty big hole in our funds if we, you know, did all of this. So I'd like to...
Some of the higher, the more economical areas that we can put in more, more drops, more homes for a lesser amount. We've got the three hundred homes, we can do that for around a hundred and eighteen, and the three hundred and sixty for around a hundred and thirty-six. It would be a lot.
I can tell you that a lot of residents out in Old Mountain Valley are calling us.
I bet.
We do get a lot of requests out there.
About what you, there, I'd rather spend money on that than I would.
I guess, Mike, what I'd like you to do is sort of come up with a budget maybe for those funds, and let's see how much we'd have for this. But I think we need to be able to provide some for street repair. And I know there's some other things that we've talked about, so before we probably start spending it, we need to probably do a budget. Say, okay, here's how much money we've got, and these are the projects that we've got to spend it on, and then come up with some numbers, and then decide. And like Mike said, we might not be able to do all this, but maybe we could do a couple of neighborhoods.
Well, I think this is a two-year, that's what we would do is do probably a two-year plan, taking part of this, part of the next, when those other funds become available.
But like I said, that's seven fifty. I mean, that's close to nine hundred thousand, so even doing it over two years, that's a lot of money. And I know we've got a lot of other things we need to spend that money on, so I think we need to come up with a budget for that money first, and then do the allocations, and then bring something back to the council. We can vote on, say, okay, we'll give this amount to this project, this amount to this project, and start approaching it from that angle. They have it to do. At least, that's my thoughts. Anybody else? Anybody else have any other questions on this?
I'm not. Ray, if something was approved, say, in January, just hypothetically, how soon before y'all could start the process? So just an estimate. I know, I mean, you...
A lot of the contract that we use, but normally these are, I'm gonna say, and I know y'all probably aware, but materials are hard to get right. And so we've tried to stay on top of step and keep plenty of fiber on the ground, you know, and so I'd say ninety days to probably start.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ray. All right. Does anybody have any questions regarding any of the regular session agenda items? All right. Did we have anybody else that wanted to speak on public forum? All right. Then I guess next is firefighter promotion announcement. Oh, okay. We all like Santa.
I got some presents.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sam. We got some cold pills.
Thank you. I hope you all have a Merry Christmas.
You too, Santa. Thank you for coming by. All right, chief, you wanna come up?
Get his composure.
I have the privilege of, one, promoting an individual to lieutenant, and then I think police and fire both are in favor of the life-saving award. First, I'd like to bring up Andrew Gatlin, and whoever is willing to do this, back to him. Andrew is a volunteer, however, he's also a paid firefighter for the city of the local. Andrew's taken on quality and task for us, EMS coordination and training, which is very important to us. And he's one of those individuals that I rely upon very heavily, and without which we would not be doing as well as we are right now. He is definitely deserving of his position as lieutenant, and I'm going to turn the badge over to his wife, Mr. Kate. I want her to be honest.
You're trained. I'm sure you can stop the bleeding.
Well, a mess on the occasion.
Mike, I don't have anything on the other. Do you want to do the introduction for that?
Sure. We have folks from the Chisholm Trail One Hundred Club here tonight to present a life-saving award. I think John is gonna fill y'all in on what the incident was, and who they'll self-charge. John? First, I'm sorry, Tim, our president this year, Tim Sutherland.
I know most of everybody here, but I am Tim Sutherland. I'm the president of the Chisholm Trail One Hundred Club. And a little bit about us, we're a local 501(c)(3) organization that stands in a gap when a tragedy strikes, our first responder family. We're proud to support our everyday heroes and emergency and fire item personnel. And we're here tonight to recognize some people for what we call our lifesaver award. In addition to awards that we give out, one of our main things is providing a fifty thousand dollar line of duty accidental death insurance policy to over two thousand first responders in Hood, Johnson, and Somerville Counties, and some of the city of Mansfield. And so all this coverage is provided at no cost to our first responders. We pay the premiums through fundraisers that we have. So anytime you see a Chisholm Trail One Hundred Club sponsored event, et cetera, you know, all the money's going to help our local first responders. Recently, we began this lifesaver award, and it's recovery of a patient who's gone into cardiac or respiratory failure. And tonight, we're here to recognize two individuals who are able to save a local resident's life. And John is our awards committee chair, and I'm gonna let him tell you a little bit about that incident.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for allowing me to recognize true heroes. And they don't like to be called that, because we truly don't view ourselves as heroes, but they need to be recognized when they truly do heroic activities that save people's lives. And the call was on Friday, October the eighth, twenty twenty-one, at nineteen eighteen hours. Officer Cox was dispatched on a fire department call at the Mariposa Apartments in Joshua. The call notes indicate the wife found her husband laying on the floor, not breathing, and that her husband was blue. I think that's why for any spouses, first nightmare to be able to see that, your spouse is not living. Joshua's place officer, Resendez, was close to the apartment complex, and upon hearing the call, arrived at the scene at nineteen hundred and twenty-three hours, and initiated cardio pulmonary resuscitation CPR to the victim. Officer Resendez continued CPR until single Joshua Fire Department paramedic Trent Yurkin arrived and relieved him at nineteen hundred and twenty-five hours. Officer Resendez continued to assist paramedic Yurkin until the ambulance arrived at nineteen hundred and forty hours. When Officer Resendez, commanding officer Sergeant Sean Fuller, inquired with the paramedic Yurkin about the assist, Yurkin stated that if the officer Resendez had not performed CPR, that the victim would have died before his arrival. And that is very, very true on that statement, because we literally have less than ten minutes. When somebody dies, their heart goes, it just it doesn't pump any blood. And every sixty seconds that goes by, every one minute, their chance of survival decreases by ten percent. So that means they literally only have ten minutes, and after that, they really don't hardly have a chance at all, maybe three percent. So that is a very true statement. Both officers Resendez and paramedic Yurkin did a wonderful job. Both credit their respective agencies and save human life by holding the standards of the profession of a first responder, and both are to be commended. So congratulations to Joshua Police Department Officer Enrique Resendez and Joshua Fire Department Paramedic Trent Yurkin on providing aid to save the lives of these individuals. And in recognition of this aid, we're awarding the Joshua Police Department and the Joshua Fire Department with this awards clock with their names and date of the life saved. And this lifesaver award is the most precious gift a person can receive. It's a gift of time with which to live their lives with their loved ones. So I would ask you two guys to come up here, please, so we can recognize you. We give the department a clock that signifies that they gave somebody more time to be able to spend with their loved ones. And their name is now put on the nameplate. It's to hang in their apartments, and that way that everybody can see that they were the ones who saved lives. And hopefully that'll help others to be able to do the very same thing, which I know that they do, because that's all we want to do is lifesavers. We truly want to save lives. It doesn't happen as often as we wish that it would. So that's gonna hang up in their department. So thank you very, very much.
There's another officer one here. You want to get up?
Thank you. Thank you.
Definitely want to give a big shout out to the CT One Hundred. I know they've stepped in on numerous occasions around the area that they serve. Unfortunately, they had to give out the money a time or two, but they supplemented with honoring people that are still here with us, and we really appreciate them for that. So thank y'all very much. My next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, which is to consider approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held on November eighteenth, discuss, consider, and take possible action on a resolution approving an interlocal agreement with interlocal purchasing systems, and discuss, consider, and take possible action on ratifying an agreement between the city of Joshua and TXU Energy for the supply of electricity with the term starting June first, twenty twenty-four, and ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine. I'll entertain a motion to approve all of the consent agenda. If somebody would like to break some of those out, feel free to do so.
I like the most, we accept the consent agenda as we...
I'll second. We got a motion by Merle, seconded by Robert, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Next item, we're gonna have a public hearing starting at six fifty-four regarding a request to rezone point zero five six four acres of land, notice tracks ninety-two, ninety-two A and ninety-eight. In the WW buyer survey, abstract number twenty-nine, County of Johnson, Texas, located at two eighteen East Eighth Street, two twenty East Eighth Street, and a portion of one nineteen North Broadway Street, to change from R1 Single Family Residential District to C1 Restricted Commercial District to allow for the construction of a future commercial site. Aaron?
This such property is then used as single-family residential property. It's currently zoned as the single-family residential district. It proposes that this property will now put the property tied at one block with the construction of a commercial site. This development will require the subvention of your construction plans, and also require a final plan. City has agreed at these matters. They be part of the construction and planning process. The proposed request is consistent with the future land use plan. The planning and zoning commission has recommended approval of the rezone on December sixth, twenty eighteen.
Thank you. Is the owner present?
I'm not the owner of that quarter. Could be the owner Monday.
Was there anybody in favor of this? Anybody against? All right. Owners rebuttal. You want to rebut anything? All right, we're gonna close the public hearing at six fifty-six, and next we're gonna take action on this request to rezone. Does anybody have any questions?
I mean, we did send out all the stuff right during the planning and zoning. Did we ever receive anything back from anybody?
That's correct, and there was no one that showed up for the community zoning commission to protest it.
Anybody else have any questions? Now, on the two houses, just out of curiosity, are there people living in there now, or they already empty, or?
The only one is the house that's off of one seventy-four, but the other two are vacant.
The ones that are being rezoned, there's one.
All right, thank you. I'll entertain a motion. All right, does anybody have any other question?
I'll make a motion that we approve the zoning change as requested.
Okay. Got a motion by Robert Fleming, seconded by Mike Kidd, to approve the request to rezone the point zero five, zero point five six four acre of land. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Next, discuss, consider, and take possible action on the interlocal agreement with Johnson County to blade overlay CR nine oh four in the amount of eleven thousand dollars, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. Mike?
All right, this is to put down and resurface County Road nine oh four or Indian Hills down to County Road ten twenty-three.
But where will it start? At one seventy-four?
Yeah, I believe it's gonna do the entire streets, my understanding. And what this agreement is, is the county is gonna provide the labor and equipment, and the city will provide the material.
Blade overlay.
So instead of using the asphalt machine, they choose a maintainer, like roll it out with a tractor versus the machine. We'll do, they'll do several repairs and do some base repairs that are there prior to them doing it. Then they'll spray the tack, put the asphalt on, blade over it, roll it out.
And this be for the entire width of the road?
Yes, both lanes. And I'm pretty sure it's the entire street, is the way I understand it from Kristen. The money for the asphalt is in the public works budget this year as part of the increase that we added, because one of the streets on the CIP that was a high priority to resolve, and also will be a major entrance and exit from a new development that's in the process of being approved also. So it'll help in that.
Any questions? Oh, entertain a motion. Make a motion, we approve this. I got a motion. Have a second? Yep. Got a motion by Mike, seconded by Merle, to approve the interlocal agreement with Johnson County to blade overlay County Road nine oh four in the amount of eleven thousand dollars, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Next item is discuss, consider, and take possible action on equipment lease agreement with NDS. Consider leasing for copier printer needs for sixty months, and authorize the city manager to assign all necessary documents. We had this one on the agenda last month, and we had brought up a question about what to do with the old machines, because in the contract it said we weren't allowed to move them if we canceled early. And Amber has been working on this. She got with everybody, and the new company is actually buying out the rest of our lease, and they're also paying The new company is actually buying out the rest of our lease and they're also paying to ship all of the machines back to uh, whoever owns them now.
UBO.
Who? UBO. And so I think Amber did a excellent job on this. She's negotiated a real good price. It's actually gonna be quite a bit cheaper than what we were paying before. And it's gonna standardize uh, some of the color copies and everything else. We were pretty close on. The base amounts, but then anytime we did something extra, we got charged quite a bit. This is for the sort of even everything up quite a bit. Anybody have any questions? Oh, entertain a motion. Come on, Angela.
Come on, Angela.
I'll make a motion, we accept their proposal.
Have a second.
I'll second.
You got a motion by Merle, second by Angela to approve the equipment lease agreement. For copier printer needs for the next sixty months and authorize city manager to sign in further discussion. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Fire? Yes, I'm sorry, we we still have one more introduction we'd like to make. We've got a little officer.
Oh, cool. You gotta step up, chief.
This is Officer Nikki Winkle. He was hired at the end of November to join us. He is actually. Uh, build our final position, so we are actually fully staffed.
Outstanding.
He comes to us from Hill County as a deputy, he's got three years of experience. Uh, his wife is a dispatcher here in Johnson County as well, so. That's fortunate or unfortunate, he hasn't listened to him. But there it is. Um, one thing I do want to point out, uh, we're very fortunate to have him. Yesterday, we had the honors going to Boski County, uh, to meet with the sheriff and Officer Winkle. Uh, fellow deputies from Hill County, uh, were given an award. Uh, back in September, there was an abduction in Boski County, uh, two two children, uh. Young boy and the young girl, brother and sister were abducted by a registered sex offender. And Officer Winkle, well, then it was Deputy Winkle, but Officer Winkle, uh, was instrumental in the apprehension and recovery of those children.
That's great.
Your attention as well, grateful for that deal and. There he is.
Thank you, chief. I've stared for me some time today.
That's good. Saying for a while, according to, I I asked Joanna to check and HR, and this is the first time that they've been fully staffed in almost four years.
Yeah, that's great.
I was gonna say, that's a good Merry Christmas present. Department this time of year.
And I'll tell you what, I just, everybody I talked to, we were so pleased with the operations going on, the one seventy four round. Uh, these stops that you're making, I think, you know, in the past, maybe we didn't make as many stops, but I think. Everybody's starting to see how many, how much drugs were taken off the street, how many felons. I know that guy y'all arrested last night was, you know. Wanted on a deadly assault warrant, you know, and we're taking these guys off the street and if we're not out making stops. Those people are just still cruising through or living here or whatever, so. I know everybody I've talked to is very appreciative and we want to let everybody know that we appreciate what they're doing.
Yeah.
Alright, next item, discuss, consider, and take possible action on a lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management for the future procurement of city vehicles and authorize the city manager to assign all necessary documents. Amber, you want to give us an overview?
Yeah, I brought Jennifer Kane today in case you had any questions, but um. I had first started looking at this uh, program probably a year and a half, two years ago. And I found it was a pretty interesting concept and almost to the point of a no brainer because. Um, the ability to keep us with a new fleet, because currently our average age of our fleets approximately ten years old. Um, so when you start getting aging vehicles, your maintenance expenses go up, your gas mileage is not as great. And to me, one of the most important pieces is the lack of safety features. So now, um, as of a couple of years ago, now backup cameras are now standard. So um, and to kind of top it off with the pandemic, it's gotten really hard to find vehicles, so. Partnering with Enterprise, we now have their buying power to procure vehicles where a lot of cities are really struggling to find vehicles. And she told me earlier today, she's already found six vehicles, so. Um, I think it will help kind of free up some budgetary funds to do the projects like what you spoke about streets, we're getting some attention. Um, but also, um, it's a business investment as well because uh, with this program, we actually turn our vehicles over. Um, some of them as frequently as a year and uh, we buy vehicles at our cost. And then if we turn on frequently enough, we actually make money by selling them back to the public and Enterprise will actually. Do all the legwork as far as selling them for us and they don't go to auction, they actually go to dealerships and um, make the sale, so. Uh, on average, they end up getting about ten percent over what we would have gotten by auctioning them, so. Uh, with these new vehicles coming in, as soon as they make it here, they're already fully outfitted, logoed, everything they're ready to use, so.
One of the things I thought was interesting is, you know, the police department, since we've got so many upgrades that we have to add, we can't really change those out quite as often. I think we've got them set up on four years or five years, which is is fine with the amount of miles that we put on. But for the cars like the Aaron Drives and some of these others, we'll actually be able to get a brand new car every year. Excuse me, and it will be cheaper than what we're doing now. So we'll have a new car and what that helps is with the maintenance, uh, that way we're not spending as much on maintenance trying to keep these cars for ten, fifteen years. Uh, the other thing that's good is when we're buying the vehicles, if I'm correct, we actually get them at your price, which is a discounted price off of what we can actually get them for now. And they also have uh, tie-ins with most of the major uh, mechanical agencies, so if we need, do need a repair. They've actually already sort of set the price and everything, so we're gonna get a discounted price. So I think it's a great deal and and something that'll really help us out a lot.
I spoke with uh, the city manager for Everman this morning. And he said that they just recently sold three cars for a hundred and ten percent over what they paid for them, like it's just crazy what they're getting for them. Um, one thing I will say is, um, their project, Enterprise's projections are very, very conservative. Um, and they, the numbers that she provided us were pre-pandemic, so. More than likely will end up doing much better in the program than what they predicted just because they were very conservative with their predictions.
Any other questions?
How long is this agreement for?
There's no contract.
There's no contract?
Contract, but it's no expiration date or anything.
No expiration date, it's just a, every year, do we have to re-up it every year or does it just kind of roll?
No, yes.
As long as the vehicles are in use, it just keeps rolling?
Ultimately, it's our decision whether to, when to turn on, what to turn, but they have, I mean, sixty years of experience in the rental car business and they know. They know the industry, they know um, what has more value, a car versus a truck and. So we're really, they work as advisors too to us as well. Um, to really oversee our fleet and the maintenance and it's kind of almost a full circle, so.
What vehicles are we talking about uh, going in this program?
All of them, everything except heavy equipment and fire trucks.
Anything over uh, like five fifties?
Public works trucks, pickups, parts.
Our code enforcement officer, I think what he's driving was, we got that used from somebody and Wayne Baker had that for his car, so that thing's probably fifteen years old.
Yeah.
And uh, it's driven every day.
Animal control. Okay.
Yep. So now, how does that work with the public works vehicles with, I mean, like? The amount of damage that that could occur with those?
Well, hopefully within a couple of years, it won't have a whole lot, but.
It'll it'll be some, but all that's taken into consideration.
They'll be on a short, like one, one year term, but also you you can do things like a spray and bed liner to kind of help keep the bed in better shape, but. I hope that because they have very new vehicles, they will take pride in what they have, but um, they also can offer um. Policies and uh, was it for the employees to better maintain stuff too, um. I forget what you called it.
Are you talking about accident management?
Not necessarily accident management, but they have like a. Not necessarily training programs for the employees, but ways to kind of teach, teach the employees to take better care and give them. Some guidelines and it's set expectations as to what we. Expect out of them using newer equipment, how they should maintain and take care of it.
A program through our telematics that can um, watch and adjust driver behavior if that's the city likes to do that.
Yeah.
What else? Uh, I've got one more question. So how does that work when you outfit, say, for the police department? Like right now, uh, I mean, he can. Kind of, you know, order what he, what what it is that he wants for his police fleet.
He can still use all of his same vendors and everything. We just have somebody, we have a middleman now that, or not even really a middleman, but they.
Help with the logistics, sorry, we're not, so we want to make sure that they have the right movement for what they need and they they have to.
I just wanted to make sure that our, that our chiefs were able to have some input and it wasn't like a standard package like, well, we'll outfit.
No, he's, uh, chief has actually been in most of all the meetings, so uh, we wanted to make sure to get. His input because of all the fits, but kind of going back to the advisory piece of it, they know when the models are about to change, so they could actually say, hey, you might want to wait. A year before um, turning the vehicle over because of, there's a body stall change and you can get another gear out of your current. Like the cage and whatever else that was very specific to that that year model, so.
And the cost is of outfitting the vehicles is taken into account, is that what you said?
So we're just basically leasing, it's similar to a lease, except it's the always get a way to close it or the opening it.
Close in is like a dealership lease.
Right. So basically, we're not spending all that money upfront, we're just, you know, going out and we're only paying it for it for years, so instead of paying, you know. The police cars, but yeah, but like for a truck or something, we might pay thirty. But we're only paying for the use of it for a year, and so those lease payments are quite a bit cheaper versus if we kept that truck for five years. You end up paying the whole thirty thousand. This way, we only pay a portion of that and get another brand new truck in a year.
Thirty thousand, I don't think we usually.
What what was it doing when you said it's coming out now, the little small?
Yeah, the Maverick.
Maverick.
It's the size of the old Ranger.
Wow.
So see, there you go.
Alright, chief. You can see me on one of those.
With their maintenance program, like the old changes and like basic maintenance are included in the payments and I think that's great because we don't have a fleet management. Um, for our fleet shop, so a lot of times we end up taking our vehicles to have stuff done. I think we try to do as much as we can, but um, it will also provide us with better maintenance records because they have an actual portal where all this stuff gets constantly fed in, so we can really watch closely. And she had a good example about a lemon, if we ended up getting a lemon, we have tons of maintenance tracking on it because it's just all comes with the vehicle, so.
And the other thing they said we could do is if we had like the heavy duty public works and even the fire department, if they want to. They'll let us use their maintenance system, so we can still enter all that stuff and have a very good way of tracking. What the expenses were, even though those particular vehicles may not be in the program, we can at least still use it for maintenance and keeping our records up to date.
Where's the maintenance facility at for this?
You can use the little shops in the area. We just have software that would provide.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they'll tell them which ones they sort of certified or which one they work well with.
Yeah, we have relationships in the area already established and if there's a shop we need to add, we can always do that too.
Right, anybody else have any other questions?
Mileage doesn't count, like?
No, the only reason we try mileage at all is to help us identify what the resale values are gonna be and provide a recommendation that there's gonna be.
Who else around here uses this, this type of, I'm gonna drink it.
There was a list on here that had different cities. I read through it, there's quite a few.
Yeah. And I think Terry, you you've got done some contracts with some of these other cities.
Prosper's done it, what, three or four years now? I've been very pleased with it, with particularly with the new vehicles.
They having to get a new mayor yet? No. He was in the news last night. Uh, alright, any other questions?
Make a motion, we approve this agreement.
I'll second.
Alright, go Angela. Alright, got a motion by Mike Kidd, second by Angela Nichols to approve the lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management for the future procurement of city vehicles and authorize city manager to assign all necessary documents. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Jennifer, for coming tonight and helping answer things. Appreciate it. Alright, next item is discuss, consider, and take possible action regarding the youth rainbow trout fishing event to be held on January fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Mike? Oh, twenty twenty two. That's a black mark, we're having a review of the season.
I've got it on our evaluation right there. Uh, this is something we've been working to do ever since we built the park actually and um, we. We had to get the the pond established as a public lake under the Texas Parks and Wildlife criteria. Which included a certain amount of time of um. Live fish and, you know, not. Not having a turnover there, which we've done, and we had to get the uh, some circulation, aeration installed, which we did last year with the fountain. So they came out, did their inspection, um, and we got approved for that, which made us eligible then for this youth fish trout. And this is a partner between uh, the city or the park board, which would, who funded our portion of it. And then Parks and Wildlife gives us an equal amount of trout on top of what we purchase. They've already done the initial stocking of a thousand. They will come back uh, at a date that I will not announce. Uh, in January to. It actually maybe uh, towards the end of December, I'm not really sure which, they will put um, some additional trout in. And then it's set up as a youth fish guide where Parks and Wildlife will send some people, we will draw uh, from some people here. And you allow the community to come out with the children, fish, catch the trout, and they can take them home. Problem is currently our. Pond is catch and release, the ordinance, um, you know, prohibits taking the fish out. So our city attorney is gonna need to tell us what we need to do. To allow this fish to go on so that we don't have people uh. So we don't, we don't have people basically violating the ordinance. If these trout are not removed, I will tell you by probably March, when the water starts warming up again, they will die. So it behooves us to let them, the the whole intent of the program is to let them catch them and take them home. So we need to let people take those trout out. There's a limit, all the other rules and regulations, game warden, I'm. Told has already been out here, he's issued some citations. I got a phone call from a quiet angry person. Um, last Sunday who got cited for. Over the limit and fishing without a license, so all of the regulations that have always applied to that lake or the pond still apply. Um, the adults will have to have a license, there's a five limit. You know, five per day catch and we've had a lot of people that saw on the website that these trout were coming and. I don't know if you've noticed, it's kind of slowed down now, but the first week or so of these were in there. There was a dozen people out there all, all, I mean, the whole time catching them, so. But we, we've also, uh, Merle and Molly, uh, I've asked Molly to kind of ride herd over this deal and uh, they've uh. Been able to provide some sponsors, local businesses, who are going to purchase. Fishing rods that the kids will get to take home with them. Uh, with the stuff and then we're doing some other things, putting things together, lunch will be provided out there for them, uh, through the Methodist church. Some of the local uh, Chick-fil-A has donated some stuff for it, so there's gonna be a lot of stuff going on. I think it's gonna be from noon to three or eleven, eleven to three. Something like that, but we have to get something, I I don't know what the mechanism will be for us to allow these trout to be removed.
I I think we're, because this would be before our next council meeting, so we probably just issue a special license that would allow that.
With a waiver?
Kind of, I mean, just be a license, but I mean, it'd only be kids are fishing, right?
It'd be adults too, mainly for the trout. I, it is, is to get, just let them take the trout. The rest of the stuff. I guess they need to throw back, but, uh, it's, it probably wouldn't be a bad time to thin it out a little bit anyway, been stocking that thing every other year since it's, since it's been there, so there's some decent-sized fish in there. This just kind of came up kind of quick, they said, hey, do you wanna do this? Yes, we do, and so we're, we're kind of having to back into it a little bit. But if, if they just... I don't know, can it, can it be with just a, a vote at the council to allow the trout to be removed or?
Just based on you coming up with whatever.
Well, it's not, we're the enforcing agency. I mean, you know, if we're gonna issue a license, we're not gonna go out and issue citations to people on a license we granted, so. So I think, I think we could just, I mean, with your consent, we just issue a, a, a one-time license that would allow for this. If we need to go back and eventually change the ordinance and we're gonna do this in future years, we can go back and, and, and change our ordinance.
We're like, they're going on going.
Does it need to be a physical license or can it just be a verbal, uh, agreement between us that during this, during this timeframe, it's, it's deemed authorized to remove trout and any other fish be released? Can we word it like that, where we agree that, that?
Like a declaration or something?
In essence, we're giving a license.
Like a declaration, like today we declare, uh?
Yeah, something like that.
Terry, let me ask you a question, um, you know? Can't we just say, you know, just list the fish, like blue gill, catfish, bass, crappie, they're, they're not on this list, but trout only? Uh, and just, just take them both and say you can take the trout out because there're gonna be people fishing after this, adults, you know, like they're doing right now down there. Now, game warden comes up, he gonna give them a ticket if there's a, too many trout or they don't have a fishing license to accompany that. So, uh, I don't keep, you know, don't wanna make it real technical here to where we have to tell everybody who's fishing down, you gotta get a license or a special license, and how do you go about that? Do we just give you a piece of paper, you know, what the day is? But.
Yeah, I've had cities that have done this too, and, and again, they license the, the event, not each individual person, so.
That's what I was.
No one has to come down and pay a dollar for a, 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 a temporary fishing license or anything like that at all. It's a, it's a city-sponsored event, and, and, and we, we're gonna enforce the regulations except as to the trout, because the trout are gonna die, you know?
Yeah.
Couple of months later. And, but the other regulations would stay in place about the other fish being removed, et cetera. So I, in, in essence, I mean, we are the licensing agency and we're gonna give ourselves, I, I mean, we're gonna, I, I would assume we're gonna tell folks, the public, that here are the, kind of here are the rules, you, you know, if you catch something else other than a trout, you have to throw it back. We're, we're, we're letting them do that, and, and.
We can come up with, you can come up with some sort of a Facebook post, some sort of a city post that, to state everything that, that Terry has said.
Lay it out.
And just kind of lay it out, um, and the timeframe being whatever the, the timeframe that, that you.
Yeah, I would think we would let them catch the trout through February, as long as they're, March first, they could stop it.
Through March first, and just, just note it in there that all other fish are.
Right.
Are not on this list, catch and release only, daily limits are per the Texas codes, so and so forth, will be enforced if necessary by game warden or sea police, something like that. Does that sound good, guys?
Yeah, that, yeah.
Does the city, yeah. Does the city police have the authority to enforce?
Yes, yes. Cause it's a statute of the city. All right, so you got your direction, you know what to do. Y'all worked it out with Terry, so I got a motion to do what Mike said. You wanna make the motion?
I'll make the motion to make the temporary, um.
License.
License.
All right, second. Got a motion by Mike, second by Merle, to approve the youth rainbow trout fishing event to be held in January. All those in favor? Motion carries six zero.
That's really awesome, I've been a part of one, a couple of them down in Cleveland, they do them down in, you see Cleveland, and it's, it's such a fun event for, for adults and kids alive.
All right, next staff report, anybody have any questions on staff reports?
Yeah, one. Heard Alice. I'm looking over the liens. Going on there for sixteen thousand, oh, it's eighteen thousand, really, five hundred and fifty dollars. Fifteen twenty-five South Broadway.
Yes, sir.
What is, what is that, property here?
Is that the one where the hoarder, we had the problem back there, yeah?
Mobile Home.
Dumped all the stuff.
Mobile Home Park, it's been taken down, he was dumping all sewage out.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome, stop by and I can show you the documents.
I just wasn't, I wasn't sure where that property, what it was, you know, I just kept looking at it.
It's been there for a while, whenever they sell it, we've got the lien file, so if they try and sell it.
It's for sale, too.
Yeah, he's inquired on it a couple of times, just hasn't moved on it yet.
Thank you. All right, anybody else have any questions on any of the reports? All right, we're not, we're gonna convene into executive session at seven twenty-six, uh, pursuant to provisions of chapter five five one, subchapter D, Texas Government Code to discuss the following, uh, paragraph five five one point zero seven four, deliberate regarding the appointment, employment, and evaluation of a public officer employee to wit city secretary and municipal judge. You leaving? Thank you, I'll say. Does that mean we're good? Okay. All right, uh, Scott, you wanna make a motion?
I'm going to, we act, uh, upon the, what we discussed concerning the city secretary during the executive session.
All right, got a motion by Scott, second by Merle, all those in favor? Motion carries six zero. We're.